The work session of the Annapolis City Council on Friday, December 8th, 2023, will be called to order at 2:08. Thank you for your patience. We're just trying to get a few people into the room. Alderman Gay is on the way. Ellie is in Europe right now, doing her own study tour, so we'll hear about that when she gets back. At this time, whatever I'm willing and able, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Right, Mr. Acting City Attorney, kick us off.
The first item on the agenda is ID 17423, Netherlands Resiliency Study Trip Report.
So thank you, everybody, for being here. We're going to start off with a short video of the program before we head into everyone's comments. Thank you so much.
Want to learn more about resilience, coastal protection, flood protection, active mobility, green environments. So these are all topics where we are really cooperating on within the ministry as well, because we have three transitions where we are working on, and that's climate adaptation, smart and sustainable mobility, and circular economy.
It wasn't like this before, but I mean, we had our share of disasters as well. And a very important one, and you probably know this, is the one in 1953, which really leads to a shift in our thinking about the priorities we have to make, and also how we have to put our water movement sort of beyond political debates.
We are focusing more and more on the cross-sector overlap. So a lot of the work we do is actually on water and food, water and energy, water and mobility, water and resilience.
As you mentioned, water falls on this side of the dike in case there's rainfall. So we have 11 on the public stations to help the city dry, but that's not enough, because our system can go in 20 millimeters an hour rainfall, and with climate change, it's more intense rainfall, especially in the summer. So therefore, we need storages like this.
Sometimes you have too much water, and in other periods, it's too little water. Can we connect the dots and make it circular?
When there are a lot of storms and the water level is high, it closes to protect the country from the sea. Our history is the battle with the sea.
Aren't there flooding in Limburg? If they would have had 20 kilometers of temporary flood defense system, like the box barrier, ready, it would have saved 8% of the total damages.
This is two barrier, one of the self-filling systems. So this is not pre-filled with water. And as you can see here, we have holes in there. So the system just automatically fills itself.
Look from above, the Netherlands, small, tiny country. But 4% of the country is floodable. If we leave it, this is what left of the country.
Solution for us, it's a statement for resilience and sustainability, and also a permanent solution for the future.
The idea, like, we are very happy if a lot of the things we do here leave this place and go to the real world.
When we look at projects, don't look only at water, don't look only at the built environment, don't look only at the history of all the spaces, look at all these layers at the same time, you call the layer approach. Think about all these elements when you think about certain project development.
Many of the economic activities in Holland are protected by this coast here. And at that time, this was the so-called weakest link. But you are now standing on a levee. And the boundaries of the levee are these cobblestones here and there. And the other thing is, at that time, the municipality of Katweik thought, well, when they're going to do such major works, maybe we can combine that with a parking garage.
And I'm standing here as the project manager of the dirt cycling entity. And as the name already tells you, we really focus on cycling. And then in a broader term, more in active mobility, and how can that contribute to a livable world, livable cities, livable places to live in, in terms of our environment, but also in terms of our own health, because you're a bit more active.
Our advice is go for this holistic approach. From our experiences, this is the way how to make this work. And this is what we will show you on the streets, but please also have, yeah, let it experience you and analyze it for yourself. How does it feel? Of course, in this holistic approach, most of the intersections are really safe, so they go by hand by hand. But if you don't do it in a holistic way, we don't think you will reach what you get. And this is our overall advice we gave nine service.
Right, here we go. Bike parking in Rotterdam. Before we start, I just want to recognize and thank Patrick Danker from the Danker Foundation, who financed the third of the trip, and really probably wouldn't have happened without that environmental group stepping forward and recognizing the importance of the experience and things, the way that we experience. So big round of applause and thank you. Tanya Asman is here from the county, the county bike and pedestrian coordinator. She's not presenting today, but she will be making a presentation to her own team at the county, and probably at a state level. And so I want to thank Tanya for being on the trip and cycling hard with us. Thank you. Another round of applause for you. So I would just open up by saying, you know, we, we as a country, you know, lead the world in so many things, right? We are leaders in a lot, and many people come here. I host delegations from all over the world, and they come to learn, they come to see our city. But we don't lead the world in everything, and we have to recognize that, and we have to respect that as well. There is no question that the Netherlands are way ahead of us in terms of making their country that is below sea level resilient. But part of that resilience is alternative transportation. And what I learned, and what I will take back the most from the trip, was the answer is simple, you know? We have to learn how to walk again. We have to learn to bike, we have to create safe corridors for people to move around our cities, so that they don't put their lives at risk. And that's what could happen, because we, we as a country are the masters at convenience, making everything as simple as possible and as convenient as possible. But sometimes, and we know that, it's to our own detriment, because we are at a crisis point in our world now, that we are producing too much fossil fuel, the planet is heating up, and it's going to take a hero. And America has to be that hero. America has to lead the way. And we can do our part on a local level to try to turn that back. I want to be bold from this trip, you know? There was a time when no one thought that we'd ever stop people smoking in bars and in hospitals and in buses and in all those sorts of things. And we took a bold step, and we, you know, we changed course, the course of the country on that. I look at this as a moment for us as well. We could change and redefine this city, and we could be a model for the country. So with that, I would like to throw to the person that I think really inspired the trip was our city manager, Mike Melonoff, as I like to call him, a poster child for a mammal, middle-aged man in lycra. Thank you for not wearing your lycra today, Mike, but he has a bike in his office. And I just would like to hear from you, Mike. Thank you again.
Thank you. And no, I won't wear my lycra around you, because I don't want you to feel insecure. I really agree with what, everything you said about how we can lead the way. And it became very apparent to me on the trip, how it's really kind of back to the future with them, because in so many ways, they were, and we were cyclists leading up until the World War II. And then post-World War II, not so much. And then they decided in the 60s and the 70s to make a change, and we'll be talking more about that later. I do want to go over the itinerary to give everyone an idea. As often happens, the director has spoken, and there's a presentation by Secretary Flora, and I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Flora, Secretary of Planning for the State of Maryland. I'd like to share with you a little bit about our recent experience with the study tour that was organized by Mayor Buckley with the city of Annapolis. And our focus was on cycling infrastructure and water resiliency, which were cross-cutting for the work I do at the Maryland Department of Planning. I'd love to share with you three aspects of this trip that are really fascinating to me as the Secretary of Planning. The first overlying theme is, of course, around sustainable communities, in that in order to have thriving, healthy communities, we need to really be thinking about these issues of mobility, equity, and of course, what's on many of our minds, which is climate change and how that relates specifically in Maryland around issues of sea level rise, climate change, and a whole array of issues associated with that. First, let's talk about the difference in how the Netherlands plans. I was astounded to hear them say, oh, we're thinking about 1,000 years. In the United States, of course, we have 100-year and 500-year flood maps, which even those sometimes aren't any accurate anymore, because things are happening so fast with our changing landscape. And I think that really does speak very specifically to the role of planning, because what we are doing is helping communities around Maryland really consider various scenarios for their communities and how their communities can be, you know, safe and healthy in the future. One aspect of 1,000-year thinking is to really understand how our landscape is going to change. We know that that's relevant along the Chesapeake Bay areas, but it also has a lot of relevancies, even in the mountain areas and all parts of Maryland, not only because of, you know, these climbing, you know, these, I'm going to start that one again. We know that's relevant all over Maryland, a lot because of, climate is changing in terms of temperature zones, heat zones. It's not only a rising water issue, but it's really relevant to everyone in Maryland and around the country. But that 1,000-year timeframe really just made me stop and think as a planner in a whole new context. The next thing I'd like to share as an observation was around mobility. We have, over the last, really, 80 years in this country, have been car-centric. Most of our country has been built around the car. We build entire communities and developments around how to accommodate the car. The amazing thing that's happening in Netherlands is they weren't always cycle-friendly. They had to actually make changes in how they really wanted to think about their society. One aspect of that is equity. There is something about a bicycle that everybody learns to, I hope, many at least get to learn to ride at a very early age, but then what? How could we use cycling and pedestrian infrastructure to not only create healthier communities in terms of the individuals, safer communities, because people are out and about and walking around, but then also think about our carbon footprint that can be reduced tremendously if we could just make it easier and safer for more people to be on their cycle or walking from place to place? Job opportunities even become much more accessible. All of the infrastructure that's being planned in the Netherlands is with this multimodal consideration and making it really safe. As we were riding through the various cities, it was, it was just so much fun. I think we logged as many as 50 miles in three different cities. And we were in 40-degree weather, the rain, and it was just a really marvelous opportunity to show that this is not a climate-oriented way of getting around. It can happen anywhere. Another aspect of this, of this trip was water resiliency. They really, in Netherlands, don't think of water as a flooding problem, but more of an opportunity. How do we work with water? How do we manage it? How do we actually, you know, frame our communities, our farm fields, our, our whole shoreline to plan for water? One parking garage, parking garage, you know, which I usually am not a big fan of parking garages, but the way they built it was just so much into the landscape and really taking into consideration that the shoreline is going to shift. And they allowed for that, and they really thought that through. They even had pop-up infrastructure to service, you know, food, basically food servicing and whatnot that could be taken down if needed quite quickly. And so this whole notion of learning how to work with nature and with water, and really plan for it very, very long-term, and thinking about water as a resource, which it very much is, and how we can adapt and change and work with it and still really make room for it, even in our most treasured landscapes and places where we all live. So I shared with you just a few things that really came to my mind. There's just so much to share. The trip was really not only about really seeing how another country that's considered a world leader in these areas, what they're doing, how they did it, what we can transfer and bring back to Maryland. And I know for me at the Department of Planning, how we work with local communities, with our comprehensive plans, how we start doing a better job of building resiliency into comprehensive planning, will be a big part of what I'll be thinking about as I visit communities around, around the state. And I think the other part of this, which is really important, is just building relationships. It's so important for, I think, the state of Maryland and those of us working in state government to be working closely with local communities. And I really know that we'll have a strong relationship that came out of this, not only with the folks that came from the city, but also the county, and basically is a great way to come together and work together.
Thank you. Well said. I do want to say very briefly, I want to thank ICMA and the Trantor-Lyong Fellowship that paid for my part of the trip, and recognize ICMA for doing that. So anyway, we gathered on the 12th of, or the 11th of November, and left the Lus Airport at slightly different time, and arrived in The Hague on the 12th of November. We checked in, got everything sorted out, got into our hotel rooms, and basically spent a day trying to get the lay of the land. A couple of us went up to Amsterdam to get an idea there, where we learned that they have 1.5 million bicycles to 750,000 people. On the 13th, we gathered as a group. We walked from our hotel to the Netherlands Watership, Water Partnership Office. From there, we had presentations by the Netherlands Water Partnership. We had a presentation by the Dutch Cycling Embassy, the Coordinator on Active Mobility, and various people related to the construction end of resiliency. Had a fantastic seasonal lunch. The thing, another thing there is they provide everything based on the season. So it was also an introduction on, on the resiliency from a way of presenting food and what you eat at different times of the year. That was our first bike ride, and we took off around the city of The Hague, and we first ended up at a landscape architect's office, had a fantastic presentation on work that they were doing in New York City, New Orleans, Ocean Min City. And their saying was, if it has taken a life of its own, it's a good design. We rode about 9.25 miles and had a fantastic first day. On the second day, on the 14th, we took a train to Rotterdam. And there's a common theme on all this. We took public transportation to get there, to get around. We walked, we cycled. And anyway, we went to the city of Rotterdam, which was an interesting stop, because the city was bombed during World War II. They quickly developed into kind of an auto-centric design and have been since designing out of that, basically bike-minded cycle designs. We had a presentation by Dutch Cycling Intelligence, and they actually said this saying, which is cycling is a fringe activity in the US, and it's normal in the Netherlands. And as somebody who cycles as much as I did, I have to agree that they are spot on. So we rode, oh, probably about six miles that day. It was a bit rainy. We saw some very interesting infrastructure, underground cycle parking, and it was really an interesting, interesting idea in an introduction to a city, as the mayor said, is very similar in some ways to the city of Baltimore. On the 15th, we left by train to Delft. We visited the Dutch Water Authority and learned the hierarchy of water service in that region. You go to the EU, the regional governments, the local governments, and they pointed out that 60% of the Netherlands' population is below sea level, and 70% of Delft. And again, there's structures, EU, national government, 12 provinces, 342 municipalities, 21 regional water authorities, and 10 drinking water authorities, and they all work together. We had a variety of other presentations on biconomics and cycling for a joyful, equitable, sustainable, and thriving society. Then we made a stop where we thought we were going to lose Alderman Savage, and that was at the Delft University at the School of Technology at their Green Village. They gave a fantastic presentation there on sustainable living and building on the water. And Rob was very entranced by that, and I think he'll speak a little bit. We rode about 14.34 miles on that, and we stayed in that area that evening for dinner and rode the train back to the hotel. On the 11th, we kind of did a couple of, excuse me, on the 16th, a couple of different things. Four of us went to the International Cycle Safety Conference. It was the mayor, Brooks, and Tanya and I. And the interesting thing is, when they started the conference, everyone had to do this. And it was a real nerd fest for cyclists. You've seen cyclists and scientists, and, you know, we were in our, in our natural environment. But it was an interesting scientific academic paper presentations on, on cycling safety, on infrastructure, on a variety of other things that impact how you make it safe and how vehicle interactions are tough. Now, we know, and there was a presenter from the United States National Highway Safety Administration, who gave the presentation about SUVs and pickup trucks and large vehicles, and he was saying how the pickup trucks and SUVs, you go under the vehicles if they hit you, not over it, and with the actual passenger cars, and then turning radius of trucks, things that frankly, we all know about living in this country, because there's so many pickup trucks and SUVs. You have to design around that. And then in the afternoon, we attended a panel on the safety technical papers. And the neat thing about that day is we all commuted there. Tanya from the county, I think she hooked on, and we went off with 1,000 other people going to work on their bikes and their suits. It was fantastic. And that's just how they do it. Now, at that point, we did a little bit of a split. I and Jackie went to Belgium. We'll talk a little bit more about that next. And the rest of the group stayed in the Netherlands for the water resiliency presentation that you'll be hearing about a little bit. that you'll be hearing about a little bit later. The real reason that I went to the Belgian component of it is, if you want to switch to that, is on Saturday, some left. And then I went to another community that I thought was very similar to our community. I have a colleague who is a city manager in Bruges, or Brugge, as they say in Dutch. And it really is a way to apply all that we were learning to a community very similar to ours. And I want to go over briefly to give you an idea, because a lot of times we don't know where places are. But Bruges is the capital of West Flanders in northwest Belgium. It's the largest province in West Flanders, which is closest to the Netherlands, sixth most populous city in the country. And it's in a fantastically preserved historic place from the 13th and 14th century, which was its A-day. And if you think about it, we weren't even a chartered city for a couple of hundred years until after that. They are a World Heritage Site by UNESCO. Their downtown is about 20,000 people. Their city total, which extends beyond these moats that go around the city, is about 117,000, but the historic core is about 20,000. And the county itself is about 255,000. So I thought it would be a really good idea of how a truly historic city like ours is integrating resiliency and cycling into its, what it does. So let me skip ahead a little bit to the narrative. As you can see on the slides, the city hall is a 13th, a 14th century building that they still actively use. On the right is their chambers, not unlike ours. And we met there to start our first day. The gentleman in the top, I call Jimmy by bike. If you know the fellow who is in our downtown, who does our cleaning, he walks around. Jimmy does a fantastic job. Where their Jimmy is on a bicycle and rides around the city, cleaning up and basically doing the same thing. They have a beautiful city square. It's an area where, as you can see on the right, used to be car dominated. And they go, they went through a period of time, not unlike us, what we're trying to do with City Dock, where they're trying to remove the vehicles, and they did very successfully. It was actually a time in the 60s and 70s where the Netherlands and Belgium were basically trying to rebel a little bit from the vehicle centric designs in their historic cities and not so historic cities because of accidents involving children and pedestrians. And we love that picture on the bottom right of that gentleman whose knees are pressed against the vehicle, trying to find a place to to sit in their historic core, excuse After giving a presentation by their mobility coordinator, we had a tour, as shown on the map, around Bruges. It was, again, a rainy day, but everyone was out on their bicycles. They refer to Bruges as the 15 minute city, and they want to get everywhere in the city in 15 minutes by bicycle safely. And you can see three different elements of how they do that. On the top left, they have the streets marked as cycle preference streets, where if you're on it, on your bicycle and a car is behind it, by law, they have to yield to the cyclist. They also designate the street entrances as cycle only or cycle in car. And on the right, you can see an intersection that they designed with markings and ballards that clearly indicate where you can go and when you can go, and they have cycle lights. And everything they did was very analytical. The mobility coordinator, Bart, who who showed us around, just stressed that they they made sure that they met with the police, they met, did they proper analytics, sightlines and so on, so their interaction around their city was safe. The top right hand corner is they have a circle road around the old city, and they wanted to basically better integrate cycling around that area and in and out of the city And you can see in a number of photographs where they transitioned into a more, from a vehicle oriented community, which again was that post-World War II, I hate to say it, but U.S.-oriented design into something that was more people and cycle oriented. And they've done many, many things in the downtown that have made it friendly. And he showed us the process, the iterative process they use in designing the space, decide what they want to have on their vision, what they want to do, and then they investigate by design. And by investigate, they do a lot of analytics to get there. And these are a couple of other design areas that we toured on our bike ride. The one on the bottom left and the and the one on the bottom right are in the same general area. And he stressed with that that they were designing this intersection to make it safer for pedestrians. And they actually worked very closely with the police department and got their feedback on it and made a pretty quick decision on how to do it. And you can see on the top right how they then designed the intersections to make it safe for cyclists to go hither and yon. And then there's other build the design ideas that they come up with, I think very similar to the Netherlands, is the way they mark the areas for cyclists only, the way they provide barriers. And then when they do joint roads, as you can see in the bottom two, they mark it very clearly and enforce it accordingly, that cycles cyclists have the right of way. And it makes it a very safe city to move around. In a, in a city that is, has over 7 million visitors a year, and we're about 4 million here. So they're very similar in so many ways that they've been able to continue to have a thriving downtown business and move it, move in a way that's a little bit more friendly than frankly, what I see here. On the bottom left, I did want to point out that that was a public housing that they have in the community. And they told us the way they designed them or built them originally, as the people of means were convinced that they would go to heaven if they would contribute public housing. So I think if we do that over in Eastport Terrace and Harbor House, maybe we can get contribution from the community when we have to raise money to build that. But it's a very beautiful facility, and we were able to walk around it and get an idea of how they do public housing there. And at this point, we did a little bit of a day, we spent one day with their cycling and mobility coordinator and another day with sustainability, both with the city and the government of Flanders. They gave us some ideas of how they do that around the community. And one of the programs they work on, and it seems kind of funny here, but they are very big on it, is you remove a, what do they call it, the Delft, the little
Oh, the tiles.
Tiles. And they have a competition in all the communities. And basically, the idea, as you can see in the bottom center, is they're pulling away impervious surface and making it pervious. And they had a competition with the Netherlands on that. And so the idea, as they do that, is to be very mindful throughout their, like a historic downtown core like we have, of making it pervious and open to a more natural environment. And again, keeping in mind that that city is, every bit is historic, if not more than ours, and several centuries older. And at that point, I would like to turn over to Alderman Duane Gay on holistic planning and housing. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have two slides, but important information. For me, the trip was definitely eye opening before I started with the housing, and particularly as it relates to the parking and cycling infrastructure that many of my colleagues have advocated for. Being able to experience that firsthand and to see how easy and accessible it was for individuals of all socioeconomic backgrounds was, was, was everything for me. And it really changed my mindset on what we can do here in the city of Annapolis. So for me, the best day was our second day, which was Rotterdam. There was a presentation by a group organization called Humankind, and Igor, I believe his name is, was one of the co-founders of it. And he made a presentation titled Rotterdam, the City of Change. And as the city manager alluded to, Rotterdam is, or was, obviously involved in the war, and they had to rapidly rebuild. And a part of that was car centric, not very people centric, not taking into consideration many of the challenges that individuals face. But now they're on a new horizon. And particularly, there was an article that was shared with us in the slides, it's like Rotterdam, Europe's coolest new, or Rotterdam, Europe's best new place, because they're empowering individuals within their communities, developers and, you know, architects, to make the best of what they have, and particularly the limited land, similar to here in the city of Annapolis, taking advantage of density and making it easy. However, that, what we've learned later from that in the presentation is that that also can present some challenges. So one of those issues is that Rotterdam has a significant income inequality. If you look in the bottom left hand corner, you'll see background and income slide there, which we spent a significant amount of time talking about. South Rotterdam is home to what, and I viewed it literally as this, as we've walked through. So South Rotterdam would be Ward 6, and North Rotterdam would be Ward 8. And there is literally, you know, a barrier in between that. And the income inequality is, you can see it, you know, clear as day, based off of that. A large part of that has to do with, has to do with the influx of immigration. More than 200,000 immigrants have come to the Netherlands since 2022. And part of what has happened is that it's taking the, it's taken the, the housing stock and available housing from 2.9% to 4.5%. And so there is no, there's essentially no housing available for these individuals. From 2015 to 2021, household income increased by 25%, but the housing prices, or yeah, household income increased by 25% per housing prices also increased by 63%. One of the very cool things that we had an opportunity to do while, while getting the Rotterdam City of Change slide directly across the street from us, was one of their more storied public housing developments that was in the process of going through the permits, or the permitting process with the city of Rotterdam for redevelopment. And it reminded me so much of what we're going through right now here in the city of Annapolis with Eastport Terrace and Harbor House. And I'm jumping around because the notes are all over and I just, you know, a wealth of information. But they, yeah, they had the exact same problems that we had, and particularly with development. The first thing being resident hesitancy. We seen like signs in the window where there was like Rotterdam needs more housing, or Rotterdam needs social housing. There's a lot of fear from residents to leave because they didn't know if they would have the opportunity to come back. There's also in their development, one of the things that we noticed, which was not fairly popular amongst the residents, the new development did not take advantage of of density. We weren't sure why, and that wasn't explained, you know, really in great detail. But what happened was is that they've had these social housing projects that have been around, you know, post-war. Now it's time for redevelopment, and they're going from 16 stories to like eight. And we've seen that on a corner unit, which has displaced a lot of families, and so their homelessness has also increased. Nearly 86% of the residents believe there is a housing crisis, very similar to the city of Annapolis. The government is currently in a plan to build more than 900,000 houses by 2030. And this has obviously been stalled, and that's why they have the shortfall of 400,000 units. And so they're in the process of trying to figure that out. All while doing this, as Igor made very clear to us, the housing administer had been removed and their post had been shrunken. Again, very similar to the United States where we have HUD, and we see the lack of funding and what that does to the the housing market. Nearly 2.6 million of the 4.8 million homes in the Netherlands are social housing. That means the government owns the housing. What is social housing and how do you, how do you qualify for social housing? This is another thing that I thought was incredibly interesting because after the COVID-19 pandemic, we faced this issue of how do we supply and meet the needs of housing for families across the city? So social housing is considered rent below 752 euros. So they split up their social housing into several different factors. So if you're under 23 and there's no one else on the lease, meaning you don't have a child, you're in school or whatever, as our intern, as one of our interns were, they paid 442 euros. So about $300 less, just based simply off of their age, their, if they had children, and also if they were obtaining a degree, which they split their housing into, you know, their student housing and then their traditional social housing, which I thought was very, very interesting. Everyone else, of course, pays the standard 752 euros. 80% of their social housing, again of that 2.6 million homes, are reserved for individuals making under 39,000 euros. And so that's 89% of the stock. 10% of the social housing is reserved for individuals making between 39,000 euros and 43,574, or yeah, 39,000 euros and 43,574 euros. They also conduct housing based on a point system. And so the more accommodations the home has, the more points they're provided and the more expensive it is. So for example, if we use like the park here in Ward 1 on a point system with accommodations based off of their public space, which they have the like music facility, like the Maryland Hall Coordinated Facility, accommodations near parks, which they do, all of those would receive points. And so the rent there would be, would be higher. But if you would use a place like, for example, the Apartments on Spa, with limited accommodations, much more smaller units and not updated, you know, that, the points differ there. I should have said next slide, I'm sorry. Oh, you already went, yeah, to the social housing slide. That was also a fun fact, which I just told you. 29% of the housing, that's the 2.6 million units, are social housing. Again, I'll touch briefly also on some of the changes in social attitude. You know, we were there in the middle of their proposed election, and so obviously we know now what the results of that were. But what was interesting is that our guide, Igor, during that day, had made it very clear that while the government's social attitude has changed, the social attitude has not changed very much for the individuals. They took a great part in the Black Lives Matter stuff, as we've seen slides on that. They were very just engaged and involved in leading the conversation in social changes. One thing, interestingly enough, I did not find was universal basic income, and I was looking for that. But that's pretty much what I took away from the Humankind slide. I thought it was fantastic, and I was thrilled to have an opportunity to learn more about their housing policy.
We'll now go to Alderman Schandermeyer.
Like to, would you like to start us off, Marcus, or?
Yeah, thanks, Alderman.
Alderman Schandermeyer, Director Moore.
Sorry. Good afternoon, everyone. Marcus Moore, Director of Transportation and Parking. I like, I'm really delighted to share with you a remarkable experience that we all shared while navigating the charming cities of the Netherlands, where efficiency and sustainability are seamlessly woven into the fabric of everyday life for the Dutch. They think about accommodating the cyclists. As, as Ms. Flor said earlier, they're really keeping that in the forefront. One could not marvel, could help not marvel at the convenience and the ease with which the Dutch traverse the cities. And that's thanks to a comprehensive public transportation system from trains to trams, buses to bikes and scooters. The option The options are very diverse as they are accessible. We witnessed firsthand the various modes of transportation. In the Netherlands, cycling isn't just a means from getting A from point A to B, it is a way of life for them. Most hotels offer bike rentals and many establishments generously offer or provide outdoor bike storage. Interestingly, most or some communities, I should say, own not one but two bikes, a testament in the seamless integration of cycling in their daily routines. One bike to go from home to start their journey at the train station, another bike at the destination to go to their final leg to work. We also, as our city manager mentioned, we didn't ride any Ubers or any cabs. It was all buses, bikes. I don't think we did any buses, just trams, taxis and bikes and a lot of walking. But the trains gracefully wind through the urban landscapes, offering a convenient environmentally friendly mode of commuting within the cities. Meanwhile, trams skillfully navigate the bustling urban cores, ensuring that the heartbeat of the city remains uninterrupted. The well-connected rail network weaves itself through various municipalities, making train travel the preferred mode of choice for longer journeys. And it's not merely a mode of transportation, but for the Dutch, it's a lifeline that ties communities together. Biking and scootering are deeply ingrained in the Dutch culture with dedicated paths, trails, street and streets that are controlled by traffic devices. These alternative modes of trail transportation, these alternate modes of travel coexist seemingly with vehicular traffic. The air is filled with a pleasant sound of bike bells rather than the noise of car warts. Yes, those. It's a testament to the it's a testament to the commitment of the quieter, more sustainable urban environment. In a country where school buses are rarity, secondary schools are typically within walking distance or easily accessible through extensive public transportation network. What caught my eye were the bike attachments that many have for carrying younger children. You'll see a basket on the front can hold two and they'll have their saddlebags in the back when they're going to the store and off. And this kind of helps a Dutch family get together for all their life journeys effortlessly, including the kids at early age to do these daily routines. Notably, all parking garages we observed were underground, emphasizing the limited above ground parking and a prominence of alternative transportation methods. The Dutch have prioritized sustainable mobility over sprawling parking lots. In conclusion, the Netherlands stands for inspiration for urban planners worldwide. Their commitment to a comprehensive, sustainable public transportation system, coupled with a deep cultural embrace of cycling, paints a portrait of a society where efficiency and environmental consciousness go hand in hand. And Alderman Schandlmeyer will talk more specifically for us or with us about bicycling that he had within the Netherlands. Alderman.
Thank you, Director Moore. One of the primary noticeable things in the Netherlands was how cycling was not treated as an aptroth. It was not treated as, and I guess we have to accommodate this, to get a grant. Cycling is a legitimate transportation method and the infrastructure around it and the development patterns around it make this possible to actually be the most effective way to get around the city and get around many parts of the countryside as well. One of the first and primary things, as you can see from this photo of the intersection, is dedicated cycle tracks. These cycle tracks were capable of moving more people than even the significantly larger space in that circle shown. This is due to cycles taking up less space and by putting a dedicated cycle lane, they're able to move more people quickly, efficiently, and most importantly, safely. We got to experience the joys of a Dutch cycle roundabout where cars were required to stop for us. We enjoyed two looparounds every time we hit it just for the fun of it. And this was a very empowering feeling. It was a very safe feeling, being able to get around quickly and safely with just you, being able to truly experience the sights and sounds of the feelings that we would have missed if we were in a cab, in a bus, in a car. One of the other issues that was brought up for cycling is do do require cycling parking garages. This was a cycling parking garage shown at the Rotterdam train station, which was capable of storing, I believe, about 5,000 cycles. That's 5,000 people. Were this parking garage, this best dedicated to that would be obscene because two cars can take up about the same amount of space as a studio apartment. They're able to accommodate more commuters, more families, more tourists by dedicating their lanes and spaces for smaller, more efficient cycles than they could for vehicles. Cycling also ties into various things that aren't featured on the sideshow, but the economics of cycling. Cycle infrastructure is less expensive to install, less expensive to maintain than car infrastructure, meaning that projects are more cost efficient and last a longer time and get around more people than a highway, than a circle for traffic. Cycles also keep people healthier, so healthcare systems save more money overall on issues such as cardiovascular disease. Cycling improves the local business climate. Sales have gone up in the Netherlands when cycle streets are installed or maintained and that is consistent with things we see here in the United States when cycle streets are installed and maintained. The entire system works and coordinates together for a healthy, more sustainable city environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Schandlmeyer. And then over to Alderman O'Neill.
Thank you so much. A couple of things that I will say about the trip. I had some expectations going in. I'd actually been to the Netherlands about 20 years ago and I had remembered them saying at the time and seeing at the time that bicycles were a great mode of transportation. And our very first day in the Hague, they said that the presentation revolved around they're wanting to increase cycling by 20% by 2030 or 2020?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, okay. So right before that. And I was like, you want to increase it by 20? You're already there. So that was really exciting. There were so many parts of the trip that for me were eye opening, but I decided to focus in on the parking because it is such a hot topic here in Annapolis. And what I have to say may not be the most popular among Annapolis, but I do not believe that we have a parking problem, a lack of parking problem. We have the idea that we have to park as close as possible to our destination. And that's the complex when I say we have a parking complex because we have to park as very close as possible and we don't want to talk about, you know, inconveniencing people by having them park at Park Place and shuttle to someplace. Last night in Annapolis, the First Midnight Madness, it's the First Midnight Madness in probably five or six years that was so packed that the garages downtown were full by six o'clock. Gott's garage was full, but there was parking at the state garage, which was free. There was parking at Park Place, you know, with a shuttle. I saw a bunch of people waiting for the shuttle outside of Park Place when I left there to walk downtown. Last night, we were a transportation hub and people were utilizing our public transportation, which I loved. I'm just going to say that. We need to do that more. As far as parking goes, we had a really great opportunity to visit a city and I'm not even going to try to say the names of the cities. It was on Friday and it's something about zoo. There's zoo, the word zoo in there. Sorry, Dutch people. But that was where we saw the dune parking. It's parking garage underneath the dunes. It was built into the landscape, so in many times you didn't even know that there was a parking garage there. 300 space parking garage, I believe.
Five hundred.
Five hundred. I had 300 in my notes. There was there was an entrance and there were, you know, cars going in, obviously was filled. They have a really interesting tier system for payments. You can buy a yearly pass, but your yearly pass does not guarantee you parking in that garage, especially during the tourist times, but it does give you most of the time. There's on-street parking in that particular town. The way they ran it, I was telling my colleagues the other day, was really interesting. Your first permit was basically 25 euros or 20 euros, about $25. Your second permit was 80, I believe. Your third permit was 400. So it exponentially went up, but many people would buy for their third car that parking garage because it was like 120 euros for the year to buy all the year round parking. So you could, it was maybe a couple of blocks from your house, but it was less expensive. Again, that convenience factor and we really need to be moving some people around. I equated that to Annapolis because in Annapolis, we have more parking permits issued than we have parking spaces and trying to figure that out and trying to figure out how that puzzle works. We're going on to the next slide. So when we talked about the parking garages, often it was for visitors and they did a lot of work with where the visitors were kind of being pushed there and parking garages were for longer term versus, you know, a short, quick trip in and out, so a metered spot shouldn't be used up by somebody that's, you know, going in for an hour or so. Or that's where it should be used, not for somebody that's going in for four or five hours to wander around. Go to the parking garage so that those spaces are continually moving. Going on, I kind of got ahead of myself because this is where I talk about the form and function. And we had a long time to talk about the fact that it's an underground parking garage that's like 100 meters from the sea, which I've often questioned our own, you know, how are we going to do an underground parking garage or could we do an underground parking garage at City Dock? And yes, we can. There's some options there. And then, sorry, I am trying to move my slides myself as we're talking. Oh, that's okay. But a lot of things that we would notice when we were touring, whether it was on bikes or whatnot, was really the instead of asphalt in a lot of places, there were parking lots that were gravel and grass growing in between tiles. And I know that we talked about that, Mike Malinoff talked about that from Bruges, that there was a whole project that was intended to make more permeable surfaces. And I think that we have the opportunity to do that more and more often here. It was really interesting as we were riding around, when I said that I was going to the Netherlands to my daughter and I said that we were biking, she's like, you? And what I learned, I like to bike, but I like to bike, you know, when I go to the beach to go get my ice cream or whatever. But what I learned was I don't bike often because I don't feel safe. And Alderman Schandlmeyer talked about that safety issue. I'm afraid and if you're afraid to do something, you're not going to do it. But they've trained people in the Netherlands, like if you see red brick, it's a bike lane and you don't want to walk on it because you're going to get hit. You'll hear the bell first, but you're probably going to get hit if you're walking. And this slide shows basically kind of that, the intersection between cars you see on the asphalt, then you see the red brick. And then you see the other brick that's differentiated so that people can walk on it and they know where to walk on it. So I would say this, of all the things that we learned in the Netherlands is that there's lots of opportunities for us, for change, for to take a look at things. And they admitted to us in many occasions that it's not perfect and sometimes they had to make a plan and then had to alter that plan because they found it didn't work. And I think that that's one of the things that I found most important about our trip, besides the fact that we were able to the team really got a chance to mix and mingle and talk very closely. Our Dutch hosts were amazing as far as we could ask them anything, giving a slice of life and you realize how close and similar everybody is, even though they're on the other side of the pond. With that, I'm going to leave. I did not share a lot of statistics because I felt in my mind, I wanted to really show the basics of what we saw and what we experienced. I'm going to turn it over to Director of Public Works, Ber Vogel. And Kate said I get to say a little bit of things. And one of the things I learned about Ber on our trip was that whenever we didn't know where he was, he was usually in the gym.
Kate called me today to prep for this. I had been working out of the Hudson Street facility. I had to stop, return a call after my heart rate had gone down because I had made the transit from Hudson Street over to the Waterworks Park to get a quick pedal in at lunchtime, which is one of the most harrowing things you could ever do, which is try to go from, you know, the Dunkin' Donuts Bike Doctor area, a cross route to navigate West Street, the River Road corridor, just you're scampering amongst cars. It again reminded me what a stark contrast from the Netherlands to where you almost feel like you're putting your life in your hands just to go a half a mile in certain places where we live. So with that, okay, the next series of slides are going to be talking about some of the innovative approaches to stormwater management and particularly water storage in the Netherlands. But I want to start with like a quick primer on what do pump stations do, what, why are they, why do they build them, to put some of this, some of the stormwater management in context. So why are the Dutch investing? They invest millions and billions of dollars into storing water. The answer is quite simply, they're, all the cities we've been, we've been seeing are at or below sea level. So when when it rains, all that rainwater has to be pumped, collected and then pumped up to a river where it then flows out to the sea. Around here, we were fortunate until now, we've been able to just allow our water to go through storm drains, goes out to a stream or directly into a place like Ego Alley. But that's changing for us and in the next five years, we'll have three pump stations as well. So what we're looking at here is is kind of an engineering tool. It's called a hydrograph. The green line shows the flow rate of water into our pump station and the red line is simply the capacity of the pumps that we would build there. And as you can imagine, the bigger the pumps you have, the more expensive your pump station is. And you can't build a pump station that can handle the maximum possible flow. It's prohibitively expensive to do that. So what you see up there in the middle of the slide is a peak where the water coming in is coming in faster than your pumps can handle. And that is what you either have to store in your pump station or it floods your streets or roads, right? So the goal is simply to, in all of this storage, is to take that peak water and try to delay it, slow it down before it gets to your pumps and move it out to the right when your pumps can pump faster than than that rain is coming at us. Let's go to the next slide. So this is sort of a graphical representation of how all this stuff is work, works. But what you can see is your water comes in your storm drains and goes into something called a wet well. And then from there, the pumps pump it up and out, in our case, out into Ego Alley. In at the City Dock area, we will be draining about 90 acres of downtown. Thirty of that acre, 30 acres there will will be going into a pump station. And so our immediate kind of kind of challenge, or just as we're, as we're thinking forward, is making sure that we, as we redevelop any parks, new buildings, that we slow that water down as it's coming at us. With, let's just check in my notes here. Yep. So one other, again, is really all about cost, which is that building those wet wells, that underground storage is really, really expensive. It's expensive almost anywhere, but particularly in a dense urban environment, digging large holes and pouring concrete in order to store pumps and water is is very expensive. So we want to minimize the cost of those pump stations. Alderman Savage.
Thank you, Director Burg or Director Vogel. I keep doing that. Yes, I think that's great context because for the stormwater management, I'm going to start talking about some of these smaller facilities, which I think are more translatable for what we're looking to do. for what we're looking to do. We will touch on some of the larger technologies that they're, and approaches that they're taking. But for this, as the director said, you know, these facilities you're seeing here are actually located near a school, and they're designed to hold that first flush of stormwater. But they're multipurpose, because on the left, that's used as, I think, a basketball court, and on the right, it's just another gathering place for the students. And it's a great multi-use, you know, stormwater facility, public space. And so I do want to touch on one of the concepts here, which you'll notice with a number of their stormwater management techniques, they're ahead of us in many regards, and in particular, as far as experimenting and actually incorporating a recharge of their groundwater aquifer. And so in some cases, they'll store this water and release it into the canals that they have. In some cases, they'll treat it before releasing it into the canals. Some cases, they'll, in other cases, they'll inject it into their groundwater, into the aquifer, and again, treat it before they do that, and then they'll reuse that from both the canals and from their aquifers. They'll pump it up and use it for irrigation, other gray water purposes, toilets, that kind of thing. And so, because they also have struggles during droughts and dry periods of running out of water, even though they are below sea level. So pumping it, injecting it into their aquifers helps with water supply, it helps with preventing their land from sinking subsistence, which we also have that problem here. I think a number of years ago, when we did our study, around half of our sea level rise is actually from subsistence of our land. And so the county actually has just started to experiment that they have a project that they're working on implementing at one of their treatment plants to inject the water into our aquifer. Thank you. And so for this one, you'll see on the left, it's, you know, water roof. I'd actually, never actually heard of a water roof, but that's essentially what they're doing here. From the surface, it just looks like kind of another one of their canals, but they can use these as stormwater management, and it becomes a community asset at the same time. On the top right, the Zoho letters, that's actually essentially a rain barrel. It's a giant rain barrel that they've incorporated into one of their parks for education. But again, I think they specifically use that to irrigate vegetation in the park, and that captures that first flush of rain. Do you have the next slide? And so green roofs, we are familiar with here, but we haven't really, some cities are starting to incorporate these more, but they're all over the Netherlands. And so on the left, that's like an office building, that's incorporated green roofs. And again, for those watching may not be familiar, the benefit to green roofs are, it helps cool the buildings, cool the environment, also helps to treat the stormwater that gets deposited on the roofs. It also creates habitat for wildlife. And so the top center picture, that's on top of a parking, or actually, I think that's a bike garage. And on the right, they even put them on top of their boats. That's a liveaboard boat in, I think in Amsterdam, and a whole row of them there have green roofs. And they're actually, it's a bit of a tangent, but they are also trying to get their, I forget what they call them, houseboats, bargeboats, to be, to have zero footprint. So their wastewater, drinking water, everything, trying to have that be a closed cycle. Bottom left is an old train station that they no longer use, and they're actually converting part of the tracks into incredibly long green roof and with an integrated community garden. And that's going to approach, an approach I haven't seen too often around here as far as incorporating a community garden into that concept. The next slide, of course, I had to have some slides with pictures of trees. And I think this is again important as we talk about redeveloping the City Dock Park. And so on the top left, that's actually a picture right near their Parliament Building in the Hague. So the Parliament Building's on the left, there's a body of water right in front of Parliament Building. And on the other side here, you see these row of trees. They're not interrupting the view of that beautiful building at all. You know, they keep them properly pruned, drop their leaves, so it really has become an asset to the, oh, and I'm sorry, I keep, supposed to do this together with the City Manager guide.
Yeah, the one on the far right is in Bruges, and I, that picture is, those are incredibly mature trees, and yet they're growing, they're healthy, and they're sharing space with cars. So you can integrate parking around among trees and keep them healthy. And then the picture to the left of that, with those trees along the wall that almost look like grapevines, I asked our guide about them. I don't know the species of tree that is, but what they're doing is they're, they're kind of, it's almost a grafting, but intertwining and trimming them to look like that, so that, this is obviously fall going into winter, so they're devoid of any foliage, but they create a green barrier. So you can create green walls between properties, there are windbreak, it's habitat, but I thought that was an interesting way to incorporate trees in very small spaces of open ground in a line like that, and trimming the branches, so they would still serve both an aesthetic and ecological and protective of property function.
And Jack, feel free to interrupt whenever you have something. Sorry, I just kept talking. The, so the middle center, if you go back a picture a second, a slide a second, the top center is just another picture of a park in the middle of the Hague, and I was just really impressed with the number of trees that are there. Now you go forward to the next one. Trees tents, and outdoor dynamite. So I like this, we kind of saw this in every city we went to, and just again, thinking of downtown, you can see the trees lit up in the background, and instead of these large white tents we have scattered around Annapolis, this is another approach. These tents are deployable, you know, during the day, they close them and move them to the side, and they can use that open space for other purposes. But in the evenings, sometimes in the middle of the day, they open up these umbrellas. And on the top right, you'll see they've integrated lights, and that yellow brighter light in the back, that's actually a heat lamp, they have heat lamps underneath these as well. And again, this really, I think, complements the historic fabric of that.
And at the bottom, on the right again, that is Bruges. I thought about City Dock and the steps approach we're thinking about for City Dock for elevation, as well as to provide seating for people and other areas for people to sit and eat. And they said that is exactly why this was just a canal before, but they built this step system there for people to access the water, be connected to nature, use it as transit, but also, sorry, oh, yeah, I'll get to that. But also with the steps were intentionally placed there so that people do picnic there. This was a rainy day, but they said it's often covered with people just sitting there, enjoying the scenery, children playing, and people picnicking. There are also areas within the city where they actually swim in the canal. They are clean enough to swim in, and we were pretty impressed by that. We asked lots of questions about that, but yes, indeed, you can swim in the canals, they have lifeguards, and they, in the summer, it's set up that way in certain areas of Bruges. Again, as Alderman Savage said, I asked about, there's some big plazas with very big trees all over Bruges, and they do lots of events in these plazas, and I asked about tents and holding large-scale events, and they said it's not a problem. They can work, tents, large-scale tents can work around trees. And they thought it was sort of a silly question.
So this part, for me, I think one of the highlights of the trip, we went to Techno University of Delft, and it's a university center, and with, they partner with private enterprises to experiment and demonstrate a number of stormwater technologies that they're working on. So this one in particular, on the left, was a deployable barrier that they fill with water. And on the right, the Nedex Geo-Wall, this is actually, it's a semi-permanent brick they make from local sediment that they can use as flood barriers. And on this next slide, you will see another barrier technology, they kind of look like large recycling bins, but they are really easy to deploy. Some communities there have incorporated this. They interlock, and you just fill them with water, and right away, you have a quick, easy deployable barrier. The only problem with these is when the water gets too high, it can cause them to float away. So there are very specific instances where these are useful. And on the left, you'll see the water running out. It was really a cool concept because they were able to release a flood of water to actually demonstrate these structures. And on the next slide, you'll see another technology, which, I don't know if the...
Sure, that's the self-closing flood barrier, that's the vertically rising barrier that we're incorporating into City Dock.
And then on the right, they included a picture of kind of the old-fashioned version of that, which you saw all over the Netherlands and in Bruges, where people had, at the bottom of that door, there's like a metal barrier, and so that's like, their buildings are right in the water, and that water does rise above, you know, to that door level. And so that's something they've been doing for years and hundreds of years, is having these door barriers rather than sandbags, which they can't do there.
And I would say that the supplier, the vendor there said he's going to give us a big discount, right, Ber?
They did, they did. I told them, I talked to the guy this week, that's coming up on the next slide, but I said, hey, by the way, I need a good price on the self-closing barrier.
Did I steal the thunder?
Okay, can I take this one? So this is probably the most directly and short-term applicable technology that we came across to us. Been talking to a representative of this company, they're preparing a quote for us for about 10 meters of this barrier. It'll cost us less than $5,000. We think it, well, it's a perfect application. I thought when we got there, this would be a perfect application for the Fleet Reserve and the Newman Street, where we get so much flooding into Compromised Street. Their representative completely agreed, I showed him some pictures, and he said, yeah, this is going to work perfect for you. So we're going to buy about 10 meters there, it'll cost less than $5,000, and it should only take maybe 30 minutes to put into place, 30 minutes to an hour. And so really excited to see this technology come to Annapolis. We saw videos of it earlier where that water was coming in, and essentially what this is, is it's like a tent, basically. You just stretch it out, and the front edge is somehow secured, either sandbags, but we'll put a little channel into the asphalt and the concrete there. Then the water just comes in, fills up, it can come in the front of the tent, fill up the barrier, and then water cannot get past. So incredibly simple and elegant solution that I think will help us a lot over the next couple of years until we get that new seawall built along Compromised Street.
Yeah, and it's, it was interesting, because the reason they developed systems like this is what they told us, they, at one, this one town, they had to have thousands and thousands of people.
Thousands of people.
A whole town would come out to build these sandbag barriers, something like this, because it's so quick to deploy, and if, it deploys, the water rises, and the water is what actually fills it up. And the benefit to this is if it overtops, there are holes in the top, so it doesn't float away, so it'll stay in place. So really innovative.
And then another technology, we did not see anything like this on the trip to the Netherlands, but just in kind of making that connection with engineers and vendors who represent various technologies, they showed me pictures of this, and so this or something like it could be a low-cost alternative for our bulkhead along Compromised Street. Rather than putting one of the deployable barriers, the barriers that use buoyancy to come up and down on their own, those are really expensive, they're $10,000 a foot or more. Something like this, we would have to use our own labor to install in advance of a tropical storm, but could save us significant money in the short term. So I think something like this would probably work for Annapolis for the next 20 or 30 years. If we don't have the budget for the more expensive and completely labor-free solution, this is something we're definitely going to consider. And lastly, so here's, it's kind of hard to see, but it says 2.65 million gallons can be stored in this large underground, basically a vault or a tank that was built adjacent to a parking garage. So they took advantage of the fact that they were already doing underground construction, and right adjacent to that, built this concrete tank for the purposes of stormwater storage.
Can you speak to the fact, Ber, that that was the garage that you all saw with a sheet of water on top with a water roof? So that had a water roof, and it had three different places where the water could go. It was a pond next to the museum, there was the rooftop, and then there was this tank. And all that water is, the stormwater, and it's mixed with the wastewater, right?
That is correct, yep. They do have a combined storm and wastewater system. But again, this is all built for the purposes of not having to install or enlarge their pump station, so they can have smaller pumps, smaller pump stations by treating and storage water closer to where the rain actually falls. It's more cost-effective to do it this way.
And they also treat that before they discharge it back into the system.
And next.
So I want to just give everybody a round of applause for their presentations there. Thank you. And I'm sure we'll all weigh in here, you know, of course, we're the state capital, you know, we think we should lead, we think we do lead in many ways, but we think we learned a lot of things that we could, you know, could be a consideration for the entirety of Maryland. One of the fascinating things we saw was how they redeploy their dredge material. They dredge, put it onto barges, take it out into the North Sea, and drop it at one end of a coastline when they know that nature will just push it down and replenish the beach. It was amazing to see that they use nature to help with an issue we know happens in Maryland and on our beaches all the time, and is a very expensive thing to do. Next slide. Of course, we know this has been talked about a lot, you know, the Dutch have been working with windmills for a long time. We know we're going to have to go in that direction, and everywhere we looked, when we got to the North Sea, they were there. And there were people that didn't like that, there were some people, there were some issues where people didn't want that, thought that that affected their viewshed, and, you know, I think it's been successful, it's, I'm not sure what percentage of their power is generated from there. The North Sea is a windy place. When we were cycling, we were cycling through some pretty strong 20 mile an hour, 25 mile an hour headwinds, but taking advantage of that was amazing. The next thing, and I don't think this picture does it any justice, but we went to one presentation where they showed us a video of a motorway that goes through the middle of their countryside, and you couldn't hear one sound from the motorway until the video guy got a little closer to a small bridge. And then when you got onto that bridge and you looked down, there were six or eight lanes of traffic. But because they'd invested in putting it below grade, it did not affect this pristine countryside at all, and it went through the heart of the Netherlands. It was controversial to do, it was much more expensive to build, but the outcome was staggering and such an amazing thing. Next slide. And if anyone else wants to jump in and speak a little bit about it? Yep.
Did you talk about the pervious pavement around that church that you were wanting to talk about with the City Dock?
Was that on that slide, that last slide? Can I get back to that? Sorry.
The one on the top right.
So there's a beautiful town square, beautiful historic building, not as beautiful as the Bertus House, but close. And we know we're going to have to have a pervious material, grass, on City Dock, but these town squares have pervious material that looks like, you know, gravel, but it absorbs rainwater. I think, you know, we're going to get a lot of use in that park. It's already a popular space as it is, it is already a very well-programmed space, and we want to continue all those great events that we do. The question is, you know, people are saying, you know, we can use the same type of grass that you see in the mall, you know, and that we've perfected it. But I know when I go to the mall, you know, there are sections that are cordoned off, and you can't go on them, so they can regenerate. I don't know if we're going to have that luxury. I think we can try for that, but I also think it was an amazing thing to see that and hear from this company on how they achieved that, that public space there around that beautiful chapel, sorry. Next slide. This was, Rob Savage.
So just to set a little bit of context on this... So just to set a little bit of context on this, it was mentioned in the video, but back during World War II, Netherlands were occupied by the Nazis, so they weren't able to maintain their dike infrastructure. And then post-World War II, they were focusing on rebuilding because a number of their cities were leveled, but they weren't able to maintain their dikes. And so in, what'd they say, '53 or '54, a massive rain event and it flooded the entire country. And so what they said is, never again. They set up what they called the Delta Fund and it's a fund for, it's a tax that they pay for flood infrastructure. Politicians can't touch it, it's set over the years. And one of the things they paid, I think with that fund, this is now a national park, what they did is open up a vast part of the country to flooding, periodic flooding. And they've said, well, a good purpose to do with that, that can accept that periodic flooding is agricultural use. And so they elevated some of the farmhouses, but the farmers can use that land, a lot of it's government land now. And now it's a beautiful asset.
And it could flood?
Yeah, it's designed to flood because they determined that if they don't open up to allow it to flood, there wasn't enough capacity in the existing stream, I forget which stream it was, the river. But the river alone didn't have enough capacity, so they had to open it up to allow it to flood or else the entire country would flood. So they kind of allowed a part of it to just flood naturally. So, yeah, and that's another project, I think next is what they also used the money.
And that was also only accessible by ferry too, we should note, that this park was.
So we, yep. And the next thing, you know, like we said, this, if anyone in the council wants to talk to this, was as impressed as I was, they went out and had a national contest to decide how they could protect the largest busiest port in Europe from a superstorm. And this was a result of an international contest. And when a superstorm, and they've only had to deploy it two times since its construction, but every year they test it. And then when they test it, people come and they picnic and they bring their wine, their cheese, and they sit on the hillsides and they watch the things close and they watch them open and they cheer. And this brings a lot of pride to the Netherlands that they've designed this. You know, we think about, you know, we're going to have our local solutions and these water authorities were very supportive on local solutions, what we're doing. But also remember, this is a country where you don't have to have flood insurance because the residents of the Netherlands will say, why would we have flood insurance? Our government is supposed to protect us. And so this and the park you saw beforehand, the farmers accept that it might flood in once in every five years or three years and that's part of the, it comes with the price of having the land. This initiative, we think about the entrance to the Chesapeake Bay, you know, obviously it's a much wider span than the entrance to this port of Rotterdam, but, you know, it made us all think about, you know, ideas on how we could think, what are great ideas for. So, you know, in closing, I'll just say that, you know, I'll stand behind taking policymakers on a trip like this because you can put it on a video and you can show someone a paper, you can give someone a book, but there is nothing like the experience of actually going there and living it like the locals and seeing it firsthand. So, and then taking directors, the people who have to implement policy is just as important because these are the guys that have to make the decisions on what we prioritize, you know. And all this is just information, it's information for us to share and decide how we move this city forward. You know, I can understand, you know, more bike lanes might scare people, more sidewalks might not be as important as more roads for some people. We have to always consider people with mobility issues. So we have to make sure that there are some people that have to get around in cars and they have to be accommodated and we want to make sure that they do that and that is what happens in the Netherlands. In these whole blocks of cities that they've closed off from cars, you can still bring a car in there if you have a special need or pass or anything like that. But if cars have to drive around a city, sometimes they might think it's much easier for me to just ride my bike through the middle of that city and I'll get there faster. Now, these are bigger cities than the city of Annapolis. I appreciate everybody that came, I think we've made, built relationships from the top to the bottom. I think we in the city of Annapolis are going to teach the state a thing or two and we thank the public for supporting us on that effort. And with that, if anyone else doesn't have anything else to add, I'll just turn it over to, anything, Alderman Shanamay?
Thanks Merrick. Something I do want to add to the mobility, general mobility issues is we saw children be able to have a great deal of independence because they could walk and cycle safely to school, to cafes, to places where they could be with their friends. We saw the elderly have a great deal of independence because if they could not drive, they were able to walk or cycle or take a motorized chair safely and conveniently to places like cafes, stores, restaurants, places to be with their friends. This type of thing boosts mobility for everyone. It is a credible equity issue to make these investments and seeing it in operation firsthand was an essential experience for this group. So thank you, Mr. Merrick.
Thank you. And let you guys fight over it?
My basket.
The elf says I go. And building into all of this, I mean, one of the main reasons I wanted to go see Bruges in addition to is how similar a city to ours scales size, history. And it's a small country and they've been able to invest in infrastructure that we seem to struggle with. So while we're debating the City Dock and the direction of Main Street and, I'd like to see our advocates for the historic core of our community understand that there are other issues out there like the vehicle and how it's impacting our quality of life and how communities that are at least as historic as we are have built these systems that are equitable for the entire community to be able to enjoy their city and come in with their kids and the elderly and have a good time and not fear for, you know, getting run over or noise and nuisance that frankly vehicles create.
Stole some of my thunder, Mike. But, so similar to what Mike is saying, we saw in action in operation, things that the mayor has proposed and some of you on the city council have proposed as far as planning for our quality of life. And that was an emphasis in the Netherlands, in particularly in Bruges, is they think about the quality of life and the function of their city first and then they plan around it for vehicles and other functions. You know, there were certain areas where squares and a couple of blocks were closed and you had to drive around those areas. And they provided some parking for permit parking, bollards would go up and some vehicles had sensors on them, such as fire police that would make them go down if you needed to go down that street. One-way streets, streets for bikes only, two-way traffic or one-way traffic for bikes, pedestrian-only streets, whole areas just closed for pedestrians, bicycles were allowed through. And the businesses were thriving. They didn't have parking right in front of their business, they had a park or a plaza in front of their business and yet they were thriving because people gathered there. These became, it was placemaking. And we've heard that term used, it really truly was placemaking. And it was a, they talked about in Bruges how the car started, people used to gather on streets and the residents knew each other, neighbors, they were neighbors, but cars were divisive. It wasn't safe to be on the street or play in the street or gather in the street or have events in the street. And by making some streets pedestrian only or narrowing them and providing bicycle and pedestrian places, they were starting to have neighborhoods again instead of just places to live. And apart from just the biking mobility, there was a lot of pedestrian mobility built into all these places. You saw a lot of bridges over roads, bridges over waterways, bridges that were built a separate span next to an existing bridge that were pedestrian only or biking and pedestrian. So it was a lot of encouraging people to get around in an equitable way, in an aesthetically pleasing way, in a healthy way.
Thank you, Alderman Neal.
Thank you. One thing I wanted to add when I was talking earlier was the ease of transports, whether it was bike, we've talked a lot about bikes and honestly, it's going to be a while before we can actually be anywhere close to that. I get that because it's a whole change of mindset. But the bus system and the tram system and the train system, you know, I traveled separately and here I am going to Europe and I thought, you know, I'm pretty independent and I get off the airplane and I'm told that I take the train. And I was able to maneuver very quickly, very easily, very efficiently, the signage was amazing, so you knew like this was the stop and it was, it was to the point that I felt like, oh my gosh, there's more people using the public transportation and it's people using it the way it's meant to be used and not as a secondhand because you don't have a car, but instead of having a car. And one of the things that I want to push for is to create our transportation system so that people want to use it for its convenience, for its reliability, for its, you know, overall, we talk about equity and, you know, right now sometimes people have to walk three or four blocks to get to a bus station or, you know, a bus stop or whatnot. And they had trams to take us four city blocks, you know, if we didn't want to walk them because it was pouring down rain. So I wanted to say, it was very eye-opening. I am so happy that I went on this trip because all the little parts, I mean, I have pages and pages of notes and trying to run through them and trying to figure out what's the most important. I was like, wow, I don't know what's the most important. But seeing it firsthand, as the mayor said, and kind of living it, you know, watching the water come into the deployable barriers that we're talking about, the guy kept saying harmonica, but he really meant accordion, right? He kept saying, it's like a harmonica. I'm like, no, no, that's the wrong word, wrong musical instrument, it's accordion. You know, knowing that, I think he said, you know, three personnel, 30 minutes, hour, whatever, to deploy so many meters of this. And I was like, that's something we can do and much better than making sandbags and the expense of sandbags, you know, it's an upfront expense, but it's reusable. So our recycling comes through, so I'm rambling, but I will say that trip was really eye-opening and amazing and would not have been the same just watching. I feel bad that you guys are just watching the videos.
Thank you. Alderman Savage and Alderman Gay and then there's only two people who are going to give us questions.
I received a question over text, which I wanted to address. Somebody was asking about funding. How does, how do Netherlands pay for all of this? And so I just wanted to speak to that a little bit. I mentioned the Delta Fund for Stormwater Management and that's a national tax. So as far as bike infrastructure, there's a bit of an overlap because like the mayor said, their federal government pays, puts a lot of money towards these efforts. They have a strong federal partner in that regard where they don't worry about a new administration reducing funding for these kind of initiatives. And in our country, in our state, a lot of the funding, and even in the city, a huge portion of our funding goes towards road infrastructure, vehicle infrastructure. And, you know, we even saw it with the state Department of Transportation focusing on expanding roadways instead of bicycle infrastructure. And for the city, you know, we spend what, 3 million, I think on road resurfacing a year, something, a number, a couple of million there, 2 million?
Three.
3 million, okay. So on road resurfacing and, but you know, we do, as we've heard the previous directors state, sidewalks are a responsibility of the homeowner and not really the city. We sometimes will rebuild them, but all that money, so it's really a matter of reprioritizing funding to go towards pedestrian and cycles, which frankly serve more people. So I think that's just my quick answer to this.
And just kind of building on that, when they talked about biconomics, we had that whole two-hour session there. And the message was, that I took away was sustainable growth. You can, you can build, you can add people, you can increase density and certainly, you know, the Forest Drive corridor on the, once or twice a month I have to leave Ward, what are we in, 7?
7.
Yeah, I have to leave Ward 7 and kind of go out towards parole. That's a nightmare. It's just, it's absolutely horrible. And then I just keep thinking, wow, what if we could get a third of these people out of their cars and onto bikes? Then we really could add development without, you know, adding lanes of traffic or anything like, that's really kind of out of reach. So practically speaking, how would you fund it? It might come through growth, but growth that doesn't come along with cars or parking, that kind of thing.
Thank you. And Alderman Gay?
Thank you so much. And just on that point and to the point that the older woman had made, I was going to echo that exactly. And most of this we can do and I think it can be, you know, will it be costly? Yes, but to your point, that's why we have the state government and the federal government to assist us. We are seven square miles, okay? We were in a country that had mastered public transit to the point where people were almost getting dropped off in their neighborhoods. Like they had the tram system going through, it was like, it was on grass, first of all, so it was integrated very nice within the community, but it was dropping people off close to their homes. They didn't have a single bus with a diesel engine. Every single last one of their buses were electric. We can't do any of that because we are stuck on a contract that the federal government will not allow us to redo our routes, will not allow us to purchase electric vehicles. And so we can do what they have done and I'm enthused. I really did leave, you know, that trip coming back thinking that we could make, you know, the city better and particularly as it relates to the parking issues that we constantly hear about, the transit problems that we constantly are going through to her point and particularly in my community where, you know, residents don't have access to vehicles. They've solved that, not by giving everybody a vehicle, but by fixing their transportation so that it's accessible. And we can do those things. I think we got the right people leading our departments to do it. So I just wanted to echo that.
I just want to pick up really quickly on the trams, those electric trams on the grass. There was no fence on either side of the tram line, so kids, public could walk across the grass or anything, you had to look out of course, but, you know, and that historically has been how we've divided neighborhoods in many cases, right? Putting people on the other side of the track. So it was really noticeable and that grass that the tracks were on, it absorbed stormwater. It was sensational. So sorry, you guys have listened to us for so long. Alderman Finlayson, thank you so much.
Well, thank you and to all of you who had the pleasure of taking the trip and for sharing it with us. I am very much excited about the things that you brought back. I do have a few questions. And the first being, I didn't hear much about the demographics of the communities. I know they are, they are not all young people. So where are the seniors in the community? And what opportunities are they given to have the same mobility as the folks who could jump on a bike and go to the next town or, you know, the next village? So was there?
They were on the bikes.
Well, not all of them were on bikes, maybe, but the 80-year-olds are on bikes?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, well then, my next question is, how long did it take this country to groom the residents to not only, to only know bikes as their mode of transportation? Because if I could get on a bike, I would. I can't.
Do you, may I?
Please.
With the seniors, yes, they were on bikes and other forms, because they have electric as well, the bikes. Instead of soccer, I'm going to say moms, they have cargo bike moms and they had to deal with that issue there with the big cargo bikes. But they also have trams and light rail and heavy rail, so there's so much accessibility close to where you live for a senior that even if you're not on a bike, you have access to getting around and visiting and being with your friends. It's very exciting on that level.
And can I just respond to the question? And can I just respond to the question?
So there were lots of other opportunities for mobility.
Yes.
And you also brought up the point about attitude and, and, you know, changing the culture. One of the things that I did not mention from the Rotterdam presentation is they talked extensively about, I think in the late 1970s, there were very, very high amounts of car deaths, you know, there, people were getting killed. The community was, you know, sick of that and they, you know, staged a large protest in DeHague in front of their Capitol to kind of incorporate, you know, better parking infrastructure and biking infrastructure. And so what you, what we have seen, and correct me if I'm wrong here, most of that infrastructure is from like the 1970s and 80s really. This is, is still very young and so the culture and mindset is still shifting.
You know, at one time, we had trams in Annapolis. We had trains coming to Annapolis and we were far more mobile. And so our mindset changed to the automobile.
May, may I build on that? Statistically, our country and their countries were heavily cycle, cycling and other modes prior to, around the World War II era. And there, as mentioned with Rotterdam, they were bombed heavily and then the Netherlands was occupied and other countries like Denmark and the like. And around the 60s and 70s, they had these very large social movements that Alderman Gay was mentioning around too many kids, too many pedestrians are being killed. And then they started building the infrastructure back as, as recent as the 60s and 70s to now. So now they're, they're up higher, but they're actually not as high as they were before World War II. The 40%, 30% and, and I think Copenhagen may be touching around 50%, but they were higher than that before. But think about this, if it's 30 or 40% cycling, then you have 30 or 40% on light rail and rail and, and heavy rail and then they have 30% or less in vehicles. So it gives you so many options and that, that makes it so much more equitable for seniors and, and people of lesser means.
And I think so much more welcoming to everybody to know that there are other options.
And there was less traffic congestion because of that as well and less pollution because of that.
I'm sorry?
There was less traffic congestion because there were so many other options. We didn't, I mean, rarely saw a backup anywhere. No one's honking at each other, screaming at each other and, you know, there's less emissions as a result as well.
Because they have that bell instead.
There's that polite little bell.
Two other questions. One had to do with pervious surfaces. And I've often thought about why we don't legislate pervious surfaces for all new projects, which would gradually get rid of the impervious surfaces. It's never going to get rid of it, but it's an opportunity to encourage development to use pervious surfaces. So that's one comment.
I'll co-sponsor that.
Really?
Me too.
I'll second you.
The other comment was, and two really, Compromised Street was mentioned. And Mike, I think you were here, Mr. Malinoff, when we tried to put a garage on Compromised Street that was with the playground on top and it fit right into some of what we saw today. And the leadership at the time, even though most of the council voted to support it, the mayor at the time did not and so it didn't go anywhere. But the other comment had to do with, we called them the bladders because we did have that wand, that blow-up thing, it's not a blow-up thing. What did they call it on?
So I'm familiar with the bladders and the, and the kind of the saga of that and they really didn't function well for us. So what, what we're talking about is quite different.
Who's in the leadership as to whether it worked well? I'll just say that.
So those things do, you do have to fill them and then empty them and that's the advantage of what we're looking at now.
So we've tried some other things.
We've tried other things.
That's what I'm getting to. And that's what it reminded me of, of the bladders that we had, which we don't know where they are now or they don't work anymore. So last question really, pumping stations. Are we still doing two pumping stations, one on either side of City Dock?
Three. Three, three pumping stations. One, one on Dock Street, one near Compromised and Newman Street at the Fleet Reserve and the other one will be on the other side of 110 Compromised, that's a chop tank in what is now the Donner Parking Lot.
Okay. Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. I'm glad you guys brought back wonderful things and I hope that we actually not just enjoy your presentation, but look to putting some things in place that will benefit us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Pendell Charles, anything? Tanya Yasmin wants to come up after you to speak on, from the county, but?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Tanya from the county will come up and speak when, after you, if you have any questions.
I have a comment. Thank you all so much. This was wonderful. I just look forward to this much excitement when we get to our public safety issues that are pressing us as we speak and for the next couple of council meetings. I look forward to the same type of excitement. Thank you.
Thank you. Tanya, do you want to do, or just stand to make sure the microphone is on or?
There we go. Okay, can you hear me? Okay. I was feverishly taking notes during all of your presentations, so I'm going to be looking at my phone, but it's notes. So first I want to say, I'm Tanya Yasmin, I'm the county ped bike coordinator at the Office of Transportation and I was honored to be part of the delegation. It was a great group of people, a great cross-section of different agencies and a wonderful experience. And I just wanted to, everybody has said what I've been thinking in some form or fashion, so I just wanted to reiterate. The Dutch Roundabout was so scary at first, the thought, well, let me back up. Gavin and pardon my informality, but first names for me, the mayor joked a lot. Tanya is the bike ped coordinator, but she's not much of a cyclist back at home. And you know why? Because I'm scared. I'm scared to ride to work most of the time. I have done it. I work on Riva Road, but it's scary. So I'm committed though and have been since becoming the bike ped coordinator to improving the infrastructure. And that was the Dutch Cycling Embassy's push. You know, they said, what's the most important thing? The network, the education, the training? By far the network. Build it out, they will come, was her message. So that's what we're trying to do. And yeah, so the Dutch Roundabout in Rotterdam, somebody else in our group, I don't know who it was, but they were like, I'm scared to death to go into this roundabout. And you got in it and you felt like you were king. Like they said, the cars are afraid of you. And you know why? Because there, if there's an incident between a car and a cyclist, no matter the circumstances, the driver's always at fault, the car driver. And so that's a big deal in terms of mindset, I think. And when you're on the road as a cyclist, you know that you're pretty safe. But nobody was honking, like you guys said. It was very pleasant. Cleanest garage I've ever seen was the one at the North Coast. They're just a clean city. They're, they're very proud, you can tell, of their country and very happy. And I think it's directly related, and they said, to cycling. It makes you feel happy. One of the speakers, his son wanted to take his car to school and the dad said, no way. You're never going to wake up. And he said, you're right. And, you know, you could ride to school in the morning, you're fresh, your brain's going. It's, it's just a healthier way of life. I, I wanted to emphasize the transit and cycling relationship and how critical I observed it is to successful commuting, using commuting, cycling as commuting. Because, you know, most people are willing to ride their bikes for, oh, you know, four to six miles, I think in the Netherlands, the average is 7.5 kilometers. But after that, you need a car here. But if we could get the transit up and running better, I think we'd have more people than doing that last mile or first mile on bike or bike walking. Yeah, the congestion thing, big deal. So everybody complains. I think it was the number one complaint when we did our general development plan a couple of years ago, congestion, traffic, there's too much traffic. Imagine those bicycles that you saw in that garage, in the underground garage that Brooks showed, 5,000, imagine they're all cars on the road, clogging up the roads even more. And that was just a fraction of the car, of the bikes that were parked at that train station, by the way. That was just the underground. Outside, same amount, out in the elements, all parked up against the building. So imagine all of those bikes being cars on the road. That's why we never saw, I never saw any cars. There were more bikes. So yes, we are not as dense, but I don't think that should stop us. We should plow ahead and, and try to find a suburban, you guys maybe in Annapolis are obviously more dense than the county, but I think we can do it, even in suburban atmosphere. They have countryside there and they, they connect, every city is connected by bikes in some form or fashion. You can get to every city. So yeah, that's it. I was, just the relationships were great. I have some lifelong friends, I think. And thank you for everybody.
Thank you so much, Tanya. Thank you. And I think Alderman Savage, you could wrap it up if you want.
Oh, I was going to, well, just make a statement for Tanya since you're when you're not there.
Yeah, we'd love.
But just to stay, so you, I think it's important for contrast, you're the only bike ped planner in the county, right? So you're at least one ahead of us, but I think you need to think, think about, one thing we learned when we were over there is everything that goes into this, right? You have to do the planning to figure out where you want to put these. You have to do the engineering as well. You have to do the grant seeking, trying to find the money. You have to create the technical standards for the roads and the bike paths, right? And then you also have the education about educating the community, right? The outreach. So there's a lot that goes into it, incredible amount that goes into it. And I think that's one thing, what they told us over there, the first thing you have to start with is just building the infrastructure so people have someplace to bike. And so I think, and if we do want to get to that point, we need to figure out a funding mechanism or funding structure to do it. And the fact that there's one person for the county, it's better than none, but one person from the county is not going to get it done. As much as I think you do excellent job, I think we need probably five, 10 of you. The city also needs quite a wee of zero.
And don't, don't forget also about acquiring property rights. Property rights are, are kind of a challenge too, right? Planning and engineering, but acquiring property rights.
Easement.
Easements, yep.
It's incredibly difficult. Make sure you get on the mic though, if you want to.
Yes, it, it's a big job and not a lot of resources to get it done. And we actually have a James Kitchen who was with the county executives or still is with the county executives office, is doing a detail in our office. And it's opened his eyes so much that he called me one day to apologize, said, we set you up with this position, but we're not giving you enough resources. And so I think it was pretty eye-opening to him and I think now all of you too see just what it will take.
Yeah, and thank you for your efforts.
And then we were going to bring up the, the governor of biking for Anne Rundle County, John Coran.
I don't know if public comment is permitted at first. John Coran, president of Bicycle Advocacy for Annapolis, my name, from Annapolis County. Also known as Bike AAA, also chair of the County Bicycle Advisory Commission. And I'll take credit for, we were the ones that went to the county and prevailed upon them to create the position of bike and pedestrian planner. And I will say, one of the ways we justified it is we said, if you create this position, spend a little bit of operating money, it will return millions and millions back in the way of grants. And that has come true. In this most recent round of, of grants, Anne Rundle County got the most grants of any jurisdiction in the state of Maryland, including one of the largest transportation alternatives grants, 6.4 million to expand, extend shared use path up into North County, a terribly underserved area historically. So to come to the question of funding, because that's key to getting any action out of all, out of all this enthusiasm. There's considerable federal money available, but you've got to get the projects ready. That means you, to Alderman Savage's point, plan, design, grant, construction. You've got to get them to design to make them grant-ready. So the city's got to be prepared and has actually begun to do this, to spend a little bit of money to get the projects ready, to budget for the match, because these grants typically require 20% match. And then you can start getting some big money into this city. City got its first tap grant, I think a year ago, or maybe it was just in this last round. But there are other programs, RACE program, Highway Safety Improvement Program. There are a lot of federal programs available. We've got to strike while the iron's hot, but it's going to take, it's going to take a little bit of spending by the city to bring millions into the city so that we can do this. And we will be your best partner in, in fulfilling that. So I applaud you for what you've done and let's turn it to action now and I'm with you all the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come and make a comment at all? Okay, so I believe it's a Field of Dreams as well and it does, we don't have to look to Europe to prove that. You look at the, to look at Atlanta, look, look at Chicago, all these cities that have built out networks and I can name plenty of smaller cities and they're over capacity. Sometimes now they're having to separate pedestrians from bikes. So one big takeaway from the biconomics people was that most of our car trips, 60% of them in Annapolis are around four miles. So, you know, we walked to plenty of meetings that were a half a mile away and we were lucky that we could do that. I'm not saying that's for everyone, but, you know, the solutions are there. We've got a great council, forward-thinking council, great county, great, great governor. You know, I think we have amazing alignment in Maryland, a lot of, a lot of similarities with Maryland and the water issues that are in the Netherlands. It's not just about bikes and pedestrians here, it's about making our city resilient and all these things are connected to being a resilient state. So with that, unless you had your hand up, Alderman Gay, did you?
Separate, point of personal privilege for the good of the order.
Okay, as we close out, yeah, okay, great. So with that, I will close this part of the meeting and we will go to, anything else for good order, is that what you'd like?
Thank you, yes. I have to acknowledge a personal friend of mine who I share text messages with, a donor, a supporter of Ward 6. The purpose of recognizing December 8th as, this is a, I'm reading this from a previous year, Nicki Minaj's birthday. This is why I have on pink, because today is Pink Friday. Nicki Minaj was born on December 8th, 1982. Minaj is credited with the revival of female rap in the mainstream. She is often regarded as, regarded as one of the greatest female rappers of all time. In November of 2010, Minaj released her debut, debut album, Pink Friday, which instantly pinked at number one on the U.S. Billboard 200 list, marking it the second highest sale debut for a female rapper since Lauryn Hill. In 2010, Minaj became the first female solo artist to have seven songs on the Billboard Hot 100 simultaneously. Minaj has 21 top 10 singles on the Billboard charts, the most of any female rapper. In 2017, Minaj broke the record for the most Hot 100 entries by any female artist, surpassing Aretha Franklin. Minaj, also known as the Generous Queen, has a history of philanthropy. In 2017, Minaj paid for the tuition of several of her fans promoting academic success. She has donated to numerous response efforts for the natural, for natural disasters in the U.S., participated in celebrity fundraisers, et cetera. Minaj's legacy as a mother of many sons, the female Weezy, Chun-Li, Megatron, the Harvard Juka Barbie, Nikki Lewinsky. Harvard Duke of Barbie, Nikki Lewinsky, Nikki the Ninja, and the Queen, Queen Slays. But always as the queen of rap will undoubtedly be recognized as one of the greatest entertainers in history. And she is a supporter of the city of Annapolis and has performed in the city of Annapolis and given funds to the city of Annapolis. So we thank you, Onika Tanya Mirage.
All right. Okay. I just learned something. Okay, we're going to adjourn. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Thank you, everyone, for being part of this amazing. Many adjourn.